So if you have a cellphone, please make sure it's turned off. And if you are going to speak or want to speak, please raise your hand. So I can recognize you, especially those on WebEx, which I'm having a hard time seeing anyway. Yeah. Okay. And can somebody open the air conditioner?
God.
Ah. Uh, this time I don't want our favor to do a roll call so we can make sure we have a quorum.
Okay. Fong. Here.
Here.
Higa. Kaapu. Magoi. Not here yet. Not here yet. Na'au. Ota.
Present.
Pang. Yamamoto.
Present.
Nita.
Here.
Kentru.
Here.
Christian. Not here yet. Eight members present. We have quorum.
Great. Thank you very much. First order of business, we've tried this for two meetings. You know, we do have a new neighborhood board assistant. And I must admit, she's prettier than the other one we had. Actually, our last neighborhood assistant was Spencer Johnson. He did a fabulous job and we wanted to recognize him, but he was on the mainland. And he was supposed to come this evening, but he had to take care of someone who was sick in his family. So he's asked me to give what we, the Neighborhood Board 14, pull our resources together. To give him, to just say, you know, a token of appreciation. So for the record, Spencer, wherever you are, thank you very much for all you've done for us so many years. And good luck to you. I know you're going to continue on to the Neighborhood Commission. So give the other commissioners, I mean, other neighborhood boards the same kind of, you know, service that you gave us. So I'm going to give this to Amelia. Will you come up and accept for? And Spencer, I'm sorry, we really wanted to give you a heck of a lot more, but we were restricted by, I don't know, the Assistant Commission saying we couldn't give so much. But anyway, thank you very much, Spencer. How about a big round of applause for Spencer? All right. Thank you. Okay. First order of business. For those of you who forgot, since we left, since the last meeting, we had an election of officers. And the only office that was remaining was the Office of Vice Chair. And we ended having two nominations. And the vote was five for one candidate and four for the other. And that's where we left off. Now, I checked with our neighborhood assistant and the commission. We can do one of two things. We can, and I'll have to have a motion on either. We can have, as I suggested, since we have two very capable individuals for vice president, have the person with the highest vote be the first vice chair rather, and the second be the second vice chair. And if, if these two individuals forget it, then I'm going to open the nominations up again for vice chair. So what is your pleasure, first of all? I'm going to ask, are the two candidates, so the, let's see, Donald Nita and Carol Kaapu, are you willing to, you know, be one in first vice chair and second vice chair?
Chair. I removed my name from consideration after I did.
Okay. Well, did that mean the, they have another election, right? Okay. So what I'm going to do this time, I'm going to open up the nominations for vice chair. Any nominations?
Chair, I nominate Chance Na'au Ota.
Okay, Chance nominated.
Second.
No, you don't need a second.
I respectfully decline.
Okay. Chance respectfully declines. Any other nominations? Other nominations? Yes.
I nominate, I nominate board member Donald Nita.
Donald Nita, okay. Any other nominations? Okay, seeing as there are no other nominations, then I will ask for a motion to close the nominations. Move, is there a second? Second by Mr. White to close the nominations, all in favor? I'm going to just ask, is it okay if you just go by aye or do it? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? No opposition, motions carried. Now that we have one individual as nominated as our vice chair, I will entertain a motion that we elect Donald Nita as our vice chair for 2025. Four or five, four or five. Is there, does that make a motion? So move.
Seconded.
Move by Chance, seconded by Carol. All those in favor of having a very old timer, Donald Nita, as our vice chair? I'm going to do it by roll call. And when you, I, your name is called this. If you want Donald Nita as your vice chair, then you have to. Name, right? Right, right? Or Don, Don Nita, Nita. Okay, go ahead. Do we need to do that? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so electing Donald Nita as vice chair. Kaapu. Here. Mitsuda. Not here. Na'au Ota. Uh, Na'au Ota.
Nita.
Pang.
Upstate.
Kentru. Christian. Not here. Chair Fong.
Donald Nita.
Seven votes for Nita.
A big round of applause for our new vice chair, Donald. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
I could give a speech or accept a speech? Would you? No, okay. All right, congratulations again. Thank you, everybody. Wow, that was, that was a deal there. All right, I'm glad we now have a full board of officers. President, myself, vice chair would be Donald Nita. Secretary is Chance and our treasurer is Darren. So thank you, everybody, stepping up to the plate. All right, first order of business, HFD. Hey, if four of you guys are here, who's at the station?
Good evening. Thanks for having us. My name is firefighter Hosoda. And to answer your question, ladder four is at the station holding it down. So, uh, yeah. So should you have any questions, please email the HFD's Public Affairs and Media Liaison at hfdnhb@honolulu.gov. So the incident statistics for August 2024. There were four activated alarms, 100 medical emergencies, and two motor vehicle crash collisions. Also, I would like to note that if we do get an alarm, we are still in service, so we do need to go. And then some fire safety tips and announcements. So fire safety tip, move over for emergency vehicles. Drive with caution and obey all traffic laws, including the move over law, to help protect our first responders while performing their duties near or on a roadway. This is more than a public courtesy, it's the law. So the law states that it requires a driver of a vehicle that is approaching an emergency vehicle that is stopped for an emergency investigation of a possible traffic violation, rendering assistance to a police officer or other official duties. As indicated by the flashing emergency lights of this stopped emergency vehicle, shall one, slow down to a reasonable and prudent speed that is safe under the circumstances of an emergency road situation ahead. If necessary, the driver shall come to complete stop before making a lane change under paragraph two. And two, make a lane change into the adjacent lane if necessary and if it is safe to do so. Or if possible, to two lanes over which leaves one lane between the driver and the emergency vehicle. Note that emergency vehicle means police, fire, EMS, ocean safety, freeway service patrol, tow trucks, and even some state and county vehicles while personnel are working. So that's it from us at this time. And if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Yes, Donald.
Yes. You know when your vehicle, um, siren going on and you're in a three-lane highway? Okay. On say on Vineyard and Poly Highway. And I'm in one of the lanes, the first person. Now, if I move over, I'm, because there's a camera, I am liable now for running a red light. Now, the question I have is that, when you folks come up, what do you expect me to know? Because if I move past that marker, I run in a red light. And over there, there is a camera.
Uh, yes, I see your point. I think my captain might have a few things to say on this issue.
Hi, Justin Vinsler. So you're talking about if you're in an intersection?
Yes.
And so we actually just had that happen today, where we were pulling up on an intersection and there was a car parked there or waiting. And he had to, you know, you know, move out of the way and get into the intersection.
Because we're at a stoplight, right?
Right. Right. So what I would suggest, this, that's a great question because to be honest, no one's ever asked me this or any of us that I know of. But if the camera, there's cameras in the, they're, they're going to see the emergency vehicle go through the intersection. That's going to be your proof. So if you, hopefully, if you can dispute it via, in writing, maybe even print out a picture of the emergency vehicle in, um, do we have? I don't know if you guys have access to that. Do you know if the public has access to? Okay, so, so if you're going to dispute it on paper, they may, maybe they can do a little research and then drop it for you if you end up going to court. That's a good question. I guess what I'll try to do, I'll try to figure out how we, how a citizen can get proof from that camera.
Yeah, yeah. Because, because now on so-called Vineyard Street, most of all the intersections have cameras.
Yes.
So the question, I, well, I was in a predicament that, yeah, I moved over to let you guys through.
Yeah.
But the question is that now, if I have a citation that I ran a red light because I, you know, the line, I went over the line.
Yeah.
And the camera took a shot.
Yeah.
I ran a red light.
Well, that's, that poses a great question and I'll try to get to the bottom of it and at least figure out how we can access or get proof of that. Or if there, we have to fill out a request form to have that as part of the court case or whatever. So Mike, Mike, do you have anything to add to that? Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, is, yeah, actually, they're on, they're on video. So let's see if they would know too.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Good, good question, Doug. Anything else, any other from the board? Any from the audience? How about any from WebEx? Anybody? No? Okay, thank you very much, HFD.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, do we have somebody from the Honolulu Police Department? There we go.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening, Chair, board members, and members of the community. So I just overheard the question regarding the traffic cams in the area of Vineyard and what would you do if a emergency vehicle came up from behind you and you were the first vehicle at the stoplight at the intersection? Obviously, we need to get out of the way for the emergency vehicles because they are responding to an emergency situation. And, you know, they need to get, they need to get to the area as quick as they can. If by chance you do get cited or they're running the red light or disregarding the red signal at the intersection and you do get a citation, it'll also have, they'd also have a picture and a video sent to you showing you going through the intersection at the time that the light was red. So with the video or the picture, it'll also show the emergency vehicle with his lights and sirens behind you coming through the red light intersection to justify why you had to go through the intersection while the light was red. So just note the date, the time, and the area that you were in. So when you do write your letter, you can state all of these facts and circumstances in your letter stating that the reason why you had to go through the red light, there was a fire truck or there was a police car behind me and all the lanes were occupied at the time. I was the first vehicle at the intersection and I needed to move all of the vehicles away on the emergency responders' way to get, to make room for them to get through the intersection. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes.
Thank you.
What else?
Okay. And then I'll go over the stats for the month of August. So for the month of August, we remain the same for aggravated assaults. It was one. For auto thefts, there was a slight decrease. We had seven in August compared to 11 in July. For burglaries, where's a slight increase, we went up to three compared to two in July. Robberies remain the same at one for both months. Sex assaults, we went up by one. So we had two for the month of August compared to one in the month of July. Simple assaults, we had five for August compared to four in July. Thefts, there's a dramatic decrease, actually. We had nine in August compared to 21 in July. And for unauthorized entries into motor vehicles, we also had an increase, a decrease. We had eight in August compared to 11 in July. Total calls for service for August were 1,233 compared to 1,370 in July. Now, I would like to go over a few cases that I just read statistics for. For the robbery case that we did have in August, it happened in the New Wano area. The complainant was at an acquaintance's residence with two other males that are known to him. The two males began to physically attack the complainant and they subsequently took his electronic, electric bicycle, which was worth about $3,000, and fled the area. The complainant called the police, they made a police report for him, and he stated that he could identify the suspects and he wanted to pursue the case. So it was assigned to a detective and the detective later followed up with him the next day. The next day, the complainant decided to withdraw his complaint and no longer wished to prosecute. I believe the detective allowed the complainant to think about the, his decision again. So he called him back to reconfirm with him two days later on August 19th. And the complainant again confirmed that he did not want to pursue the case and he did not want to prosecute. So he no longer wanted to prosecute for that robbery. One of the sex assaults that we did have was a female that flew in from Chicago, Illinois. She felt a little sick after getting off of the plane. So she went to fall, she went to sleep. She fell asleep in one of the restrooms at the airport. So this sex assault did not occur in your guys' area. It was reported in your area because after she claimed that she was sexually assaulted at the airport, the emergency responders transported, the ambulance transported her over to Kuakini Hospital where she was treated and everything over there. She, unfortunately, she was uncooperative with the staff members over there. And she didn't have an address, she didn't have a phone number. So as of now, the case is still pending further developments and it's assigned to a sex crimes detective. It's just the sex crimes detective has no ways of getting in contact with the female. The suspect is still unknown for that case. We also have a Coffee with a Cop coming up. Our community policing team will be hosting another Coffee with a Cop. The event will be held on September 27th. And it's going to be at the Starbucks located at the Moanalua Shopping Center. And that's located at 930 Vulcanburg Street. It's going to be held from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And the community members are encouraged to come out and this will give them an opportunity to talk story and build relationships with police officers over a cup of coffee. So if you guys do have time, again, the date is September 27th and it's going to be at the Starbucks located at the Moanalua Shopping Center at 930 Vulcanburg Street. And again, the time is at 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And finally, we also have a National Take Back Initiative. This event is sponsored by the Drug Enforcement Administration and is to provide a safe, convenient, and responsible means to dispose of prescription drugs while also being educated about potential abuse of medication. So these are the following locations that are designated as take back locations and will operate from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday, October 26, 2024. So it's going to be at the Hawaii Capitol, the Honolulu Fire Department Station number 18 in Kailua, the Honolulu Police Department Pearl City Station, and the Time Supermarket at Kahala Mall. So once again, it's a National Take Back Initiative and it's sponsored by the Drug Enforcement Administration. And it's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Saturday, October 26. And at this time, I'll be open up for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Any questions by the board? I have just one, out of curiosity, and I'm so happy that the, I guess you call it crime statistics, is so low for our neighborhood. Did you ever do a comparison in regards to the different neighborhood boards and, you know, one's a little more safer than the other or less crime or less, you know, offenses?
Well, as far as doing the other neighborhood boards, the statistics vary because as far as your guys' area, it will only have four beats in your other area. Where other neighborhood boards, there's a lot more beats in those areas. So the numbers obviously will be a lot larger than your guys' one. And some, some neighborhoods might be less than yours, but that's why the numbers are, it will vary. And then also the area where the neighborhood board is, right? I mean, they might have more population or it might be in the industrial area. So those are all things that will come into play with the numbers.
Okay, I think that answered my question, but just the, your description of the offenses, actually, not very many, we call it major crimes or serious offenses. Thank you. Any other questions from the board, audience? How about the WebEx? None? Hey, Lieutenant, thank you very much. Good job.
Question.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, there's a question? That sounds like Henry.
Yeah.
Henry.
Okay. So that person that came from Chicago, that woman, anyway. So are you guys classifying her as a homeless person?
Well, at this time, we, we have no means of getting in contact with her until she comes forward or somebody finds her. We don't have an address or a phone number for, to get in contact with her. So it's still pending further developments. We're not classifying her as a residentially challenged person yet until we can get further, more further information from her.
Okay. And the second question I have is Chinatown just got 30 new cameras, I guess, for that district. I was concerned about the planning of it. Planning the installation is fine, but there's no planning in regards to observation and monitoring of the system itself. Who's, who's supposed to be in charge of that? Is it the IT department that did the installation? Or is it the police officers? From one other information I received, you, Chinatown District Police Station actually can view the cameras, but nobody's monitoring them.
Okay, so that question, I believe, would be better asked to the District One Neighborhood Board or neighborhood person that represents them. I'm actually in the Kalihia area, so I don't know exactly how they operate the cameras over there. And for, as far as I know, from the past experience, there are cameras at the station that they can be viewed. But as far as their, their operations for it, that would be a better question for them to answer rather than me.
Okay. The reason why is we have hotspots around, like Mayor Wright's and KPT and things. I think we would benefit having cameras around that area. But what good is it if it's not being monitored and be proactive about the situation? It, it'll be more designed for after the fact when there's a shooting of some sort. Then you guys look at the cameras, right? Look at the recordings.
Well, not necessarily. If we did get cameras in our area and we did have somebody assigned to monitor it, if we did see a crime occurring, we could address it immediately or right then and there. Not necessarily always after the fact.
Yeah, but without, it sounds like the Chinatown one don't have the procedures established yet.
Okay, so that you would have to confirm with the Chinatown, the District One Neighborhood Board.
Okay. I'll ask, I'll speak with them. Thank you.
All right, I forgot where we left. Oh, I know, Border Water. Oh, do we still have HPD on there? No, I think he went home. Is he still? Lieutenant, are you still there? You have anything else to add? I think that's where he left off. He's in the corner. I guess not. Anybody have any questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Okay, we're gonna move on. Border Water Supply. All right, all right. Hey Iris.
Glad to be back. Iris Oda, Border Water Supply. Um, so I report on main breaks. We did have one on August fourth near twenty five oh two Rook Avenue. And my one announcement is imagine imagine a day without water. Sorry, I passed you guys off the flyer and online. Hopefully, I think it's in the Google Drive. Um, on this Imagine a Day Without Water is on Saturday, September twenty eighth from ten AM to two PM at the Kapolei Regional Park. So we're gonna have more than fifteen city and state and community organizations. We're gonna have booths with interactive activities, zerg skate plant and craft, rainbow workshops, own food and desserts and snacks for sale and succulent mini workshops. So on the back is a map. Oh yeah, the time is here, so sorry. I read the wrong way. Okay, so that's my announcement. So please go on September twenty eighth from ten to two at Kapolei Regional Park. I had follow ups from last month. Um, I did report on it. I did let you know that um about the fifty, we had Chair Fong had asked about a fifty percent rate increase. This was a few months ago. And I reported about that. We do have a rate increase that's coming up. So or that is ongoing. I passed out the flyer that I meant to pass out months ago. Um, so it's uh we do have a rate increase every year over the next multiple years. And the amount is about fifty percent. It's actually sixty. Um, but uh it's actually sixty six percent overall, but it's it's over the five year period. It's not a one time increase. So um just wanted to let you know that more detail is on the paper for the different kind of uses like residential, multifamily, things like that. And that should also be on the Google Drive for those that wanna reread it. We've given a presentation on this months ago. Um, so if you have any more questions on that one. And there was another follow up about, I think it was feral chickens was being asked about the Halava Zero Skate Garden. Um, how are we dealing with ongoing feral chicken problems over there? So we have a trapper that we hired who frequently captures and removes feral chickens from that Halava Zero Skate Garden. So the resident, whoever notice notices it, can you call seven four eight five zero four one? If they see the chicken on the property and then we'll take care of it. So um for the Zero Skate Garden now. Not any feral chickens, sorry. Um, okay, and that's it for my report.
Thank you, Iris. Out of curiosity, you catch them, what do they do with them?
That's a good question. I don't know. I but
I'll 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 let Jenna answer that question. All right, yeah. I was wondering, what are you catching? What do you do with them?
I know, if you could eat them.
Chicken adobo or something like that? No.
But I don't know if we're allowed to do that.
I don't know. I mean, but don't eat them. Someone's definitely. Okay.
Idea, but yeah.
But okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Iris, you know this uh ten um hundred dollar rebate for low flashing product is according to this, is still open?
You know, I was trying to look that up online. I'll let you know tonight if it's still being offered, if I can get online to look at it.
Thank you.
But yeah, there's still a little any rebate. I think forty might be the minimum. But there's a deadline. You have to respond within so many weeks or months between when you first install it. Okay.
Any other questions, board? Uh, from the audience, how about Webex? None, Iris, thanks a lot for coming. Nice seeing you.
Nice to see you. Glad to be here finally.
Thanks. All right, uh, next, uh, filling of vacancies. We have one vacancy subdistrict number four. Anybody interested? Guess not. Uh, resident concerns, I'm gonna turn the mic over to uh our friend here, and he's gonna go and tell you about it. It's why I get some concern from.
Uh, it was, it's been reported that there was a problem with the bus stop, with the signage on with the signage on the bus stops. And it was reported back in February originally. But I guess the signs are still there in the the uh the city. They they reported that the signs hadn't stayed because it was some kind of shuttle service. It used to go taking the start. It's it hasn't addressed the problem to keep the being there waiting for the bus. And there's no nothing to tell them that does it not.
I I I think the location was. You you got the location, right? Yeah, Wiley. And the concerned citizen was here, but he had to leave. And he's gonna email you the information now, Ed. Thank you. Anybody else? Any other concerns? Okay, moving right along. Uh, let's see. Anybody attend any meetings that may be of uh interest to us as a board? None? Yes? Who? Okay, yes.
Aloha Chair, um, I realize that you've moved on, but I had a um not necessarily a concern, but a a quick share sharing with um your neighborhood board. Um, Aloha Chair and Board Members, my name is Karen Iwana. And I am the Director of Advancement for Kulia Academy. It's a brand new charter school in Kalihie, and we opened our doors to a hundred sixth grade students last month. In part, the reason I am here is because we have students who reside in your neighborhood board region. Our charter schools in Hawaii are allowed to accept students from throughout the island, so they're not only designated in the Kalihie area where our school is, but we all have students from as far as Wainai to Kahala from all over the island. Um, our school is unique in that we're preparing students for higher education and top paying STEM jobs. We have a comprehensive artificial intelligence and data science curriculum. And our sixth graders are coding programs, flying drones, building self-driving cars, mastering augmented reality through those those goo um the AR um artificial intelligence with all of that with their um eye eyewear and connecting with the community through East Cyber Mission. This year, we're at capacity. However, we are accepting applications for students entering the sixth and seventh grade next year. And if you and the board are interested and the community is interested in learning more, perhaps even enrolling your child or know of a family that may benefit from having their child attend our school, you may log on to info@kulia academy. We also have a recent YouTube upload and I'll include that in the chat. Thank you so much for your time and continued service, Chair and Board Members.
Again, uh, where is it your school and is there a telephone number you want to put it on the record?
I'll in um, yes, I'll include it in the chat and you can reach me at area code eight zero eight three eight three eight two one eight. Our school is located at the old Saint John the Baptist School site. As some of you may know, that school was recently closed in twenty twenty. And we were allowed to um lease that site from the Catholic Diocese.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Any any questions? Yes, go ahead. Chance?
Hi Karen, I have a question. Um, I'm just curious as to why it's only open to sixth and seventh graders.
Right, currently, well, our long range plan is to accept a hundred students this year. And then next year, we'll be accepting sixth and seventh graders and work our way up annually until we reach the twelfth grade. Our very long term plan is also going back down. So once we hit the twelfth grade, um, we would need to definitely find another campus, but work from fifth, fourth, third until we reach um a school that's grades K through twelve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the board, the audience? How about Webex? Okay, thank you for that information.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, moving right along.
Ompo. Okay, um, the Citizens Advisory Committee to the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is transportation um for Oahu. We met on September fourth. And um it was a good presentation on Vision Zero, which is the project to eliminate traffic-related deaths and serious injuries in Oahu. Um, so down to zero. And uh the basic, um, there's lots of uh ways to do this, but it's safe speeds, safe streets, safe people, education, uh, safe vehicles, and good post-crash care. Ways you can get to the get to zero fatalities. Um, see, um, there will be, uh, they mentioned a public dashboard coming where you can log in and see where the crashes have occurred. Better judge what's safe and not attention needs to be paid. Um, there were lots of um interesting ways that are are being considered uh in the study and implementation of to achieve um safer, all the safer speeds and streets. Uh, and one of of particular interest to us is the to make streets safer, there is a solar panel solar solar powered rectangular rapid flashing beacon at crosswalks, um, so that to implement, um, you know, the signage. So so drivers will pay more attention and it's called RRF. Initials, there will be one that will be um put in at school. And um I didn't catch the name of the um street, but that's where Kukua Kalihie Valley, its office is in Kalihie. So that's coming. Should be a help. And there'll be more, just kind of a private, private project. But um, you know, there'll be more coming. And these are less expensive than the earlier beacons, solar powered. And um speaking of, now let's see what else, um. Um, they did the project did collect statistics on actual fatalities um and life-changing in injuries that happen for accidents of pedestrians and fires. And forty four percent of these deaths and life-changing injuries actually take place in swat. So don't do not consider crosswalks necessarily safe. Um, you know, pay attention. Street.
Okay, thank you very much, Corin, and welcome back home. Corin just came back from Los Angeles where it's a hundred and twelve degrees. Oh, I don't think I'll complain anymore. All right, next, coming up, our mayor's representative, Ed.
Hello, and good evening. Edward Los Manos, Deputy Director, Department of Community Services. I'm Mayor's Rep for um Neighborhood Board fourteen. Before I start though, on the rapid flashing beacons, you know, they usually pilot them in different neighborhoods, so sometimes if your living room is right across the street from the rapid flashing beacon, you're watching TV and the thing's kind of going off every time somebody's pushing that button. Um, it's not, it's not a perfect solution for every neighborhood. So I mean, if you guys do have feedback on those rapid flashing beacons, I'm not trying to try to kill them, but you know, provide the feedback in there, see if we can do something to direct that lighting or something like that to make it a successful um safety feature. But doesn't, I mean, we got feedback, doesn't work in everywhere. Just like if anybody uses the pulley, those speed humps that they got coming, going up and down the pulley, they have to, you know, put them up, take them down. They're trying to get the angle right because sun was making too much loud noise. If you have like your living room or your bedroom, right, like it's right next to the Pali Highway, you would just hear those cars kind of going, you know, up and down. And so they had to get just right. So it took several iterations of that. So um, but Vision Zero is a great project, um, something that we need here. Um. As terms of the uh mayor's updates from the mayor, uh, his newsletter is on uh the city website. First one we have is, you know, the surgeon gun gun violence in Wainai posted last month that unfortunately continued on to this month. Um, prompted a big response from the state, city, and all federal partners, trying to figure out what we can do to get a handle on this. Uh, but the big message from that room was enough is enough. You know, one of my, happens to be one of my cousins was one of the first vitalities earlier this year, earlier on March springtime. Uh, that rancher that was that lived in Wainai that approached those kids that were stealing his livestock, but that fatality was happening to my cousin, so um. Mayor's message coming out there is enough is enough. Um, and, you know, they're looking for, uh, folks in the neighborhood, you know, things, whatever we can do to kind of help law enforcement at all levels, uh, try and curb that activity out there. Because like I said, that was published on our newsletter last month, but unfortunately it followed us through, um, month of September. Also from the Mayor, uh, brought up earlier, were those cameras installed? So there were thirty cameras, so we saw thirty. Plan is to install a total of sixty cameras in Chinatown area. So we're about halfway there. Um, we can follow up with you on who and who monitors the cameras and, uh, what the program is. I've actually seen some cool, um, artificial intelligence when I was at UH. Sometimes you can just have artificial intelligence, uh, identify those things that have popped up, those cameras for whoever's buying those cameras, and it's kind of pop up and, you know, is there some kind of alarm or something that goes, that's what the University of Hawaii has. But I'm, I'm not sure what, how this one works, so don't quote me on that's how this Chinatown thing's going to operate. Um, but I can follow up with you on that, uh, Mr. Ne. Oh, sorry, was Henry's concern, or is it Mr. Ne? I can follow up on that concern for you. Henry? The last few items was the, uh, Porter Home in Pensacola Street, uh, fourteen twenty-one Pensacola. We did take that one down, demolish, we did tear that lot, and we'll be installing fencing to make sure, um, things can accumulate in that area. Uh, last item I have is Honolulu, the most desirable place to live as voted, but as to live and visit. So, second year in a row from the Economist Intelligence Unit's Global Livability Index. And then we also got named the world's safest city to travel to by, for women, LGBTQ, so lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer population, as well as the BIPOC community, Black Indigenous, and people of color, by Berkshire Hathaway Travel Protection, this seller. And again, if you, if you want to see the full Mayor's, uh, newsletter, check it out on the, on the city website. It also has a location of all the thirty cameras that have been installed so far. Updates from the prior month, um, that I have, that I was looking into is on the, um, Napoyo Mini Park. So Parks and Rec returned, they kind of investigated, took a look at what the situation was over there. Uh, so they'll be, um, setting up a temporary fence, you know, protected area in the park while they clean it up. And what they're going to do is, in the future, when there's heavy rain events, make sure they got to go out there with some pressure washers to, um, immediately address that area, um, before algae can build up to a dangerous level. Um, on the Olive Drive and Kapalama Avenue, um, speeding concern. DTS wanted more time to adjust the concern. I know you, I got that, um, letter addressed to Mimi Zuno's office, but I, I am aware you can check with, um, Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office. He did get an update that they will be sharing tonight on that. Um, and I saw, I mean, we worked together on that. I understand, I mean, she shared her, what her update is with me, but I do want to give credit to Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office on this one.
Should we keep this on the, on the agenda?
Well, she has an update in, uh, yeah, likely we'll have to stay on the agenda.
I'll just keep it on.
You can keep it on.
Okay.
She'll, she'll come on later on, she'll provide her update, but it's not, uh, anything conclusive yet. She just has an update on progress and where we stand.
I'll leave it. I'm going to cross off the drainage at Napoyo Park, because they're familiar with that, so at least they know how to remedy. Next?
And the last time, last thing I had to update on was the, any progress on the Hanae Loop? And, uh, things are where they were at the last time when I reported in July, uh, building permit under review for this, for the new building permit that they submitted to correct the NOB, um, that was issued. So.
I'll, I'll keep that on, till it's, it's resolved. Um, let me see. Do you want to talk about, um, I see there's a, uh, Ala Neil Street near the Lana Kila Elementary School. I got two emails, and maybe I'll ask, uh, Chance to go and comment on that. Where, there was some concern about traffic in, in that school area. Remember that? Yeah, you want to mention that? It's under item, um, eleven C.
Yeah, so a resident had brought it up to the school's principal, if I believe. Um, I went off the email that was forwarded to me by Chair Fong, but the resident's concern was that there was, with Ala Neil being a high-traffic area, especially during after-school times, um, per the resident. Let me pull up the email right here. So per the resident, uh, August fourteenth, a car was rushing from Lana Kila Elementary School's driveway around to Ala Neil Street, and then the driver behind that resident had thought it was a ready to pass his vehicle, almost hitting the vehicle coming out of Lana Kila. So he was, the resident was wondering if the traffic study might, is possible to be conducted for Ala Neil Street um, due to that incident.
I think what they need is a traffic study to make sure. It's, it's, I, I've been there in that time. It's, it's congested, and I dig, cars coming out, going for, you know, no, the kids are around, right? Is that right? Okay, any, uh, comments or questions from the board?
Thanks, I'll follow up on that.
You follow up on that?
When you guys bring up street names, it may not be on my normal route, but I, I started coming there, but as I come up from Kapalama Hala, I started using school street more, uh, because that's been a certain area, uh, as well as, um, Ala Neil. And then I use Kapalama and Hala every day to get my son after, after work there.
So see how fortunate we are, we have a city representative who walks the walk. Thank you.
Question? I have my hand up. Yes, okay. Uh, in regards to the, uh, DPP on Lilihah Street, so the non-conform, the ADU that was not correctly sized for the drawings, can you tell us the status on that? Because right now, I drive that, um, Lilihah Street quite often, and I see a lot of people living there now, and it looks like more than five non-related people. I was wondering if somebody can check on that, or at least give us an update on Lilihah Street.
What, what's the address, Henry?
I don't have the address. It's been tagged on our previous events from DPP.
Was that the eleven fifty-seven Lilihah Street?
Judge, Judge Street and Lilihah Street.
And what's the concern? Jud and, Jud and, Jud and Leo?
Yes.
What was your concern?
Yeah, it looks like a lot of activity there in regards to residential's living. I think you guys approved one unit out of the two.
Your concern is about residents living there? What's the concern?
Yeah, it looks like a monster home. So if we can, it's since the building permit didn't approve the ADU unit in the back, it's a good opportunity to have DPP go ahead and check on things.
I'm going to put, uh, Judge, Judge Lilihah, Monster, question mark, City Rep. I don't know where that is. You can figure that out.
We'll look at the.
Okay, I'll put it on the agenda, Henry.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, hey, anything else? Board members?
That's it.
I got.
Donald?
Yeah, you know when your report, the mayor's report on the shooting in Wainai? The question I have is, when is the Wainai Police Station going to be open? In here, they tell you, wow, they're going to have more police and all that. The issue is, when is that police station going to be open? Because I believe that station had, what, twenty years already it's been built? Because I used to go fishing over there, and the police, the police station was already established. So when is the city going to step up and put this station into service?
So my understanding is the Wainai Station is open. I think there is some vacant space in there, and I, last report I heard was that there, I mean, Chief Logan's been working hard to try and get recruitment up, but there is officer shortage.
So you both have funding to support that station? Because the thing is that, you know, the mayor always say that, oh, and then the mayor's budget, mayor before we should talk about millions, now his budget is billions. I mean, if he cannot have money to facilitate this station, something's wrong. Because what about the police commission? Why aren't they going to get into, involved in this? Because the way I read it, and now I read this thing, it's a lot of, I hate to tell you, but it's a lot of bull. Yeah, you're going to have more police station, or I mean, more police force down there. But the question was, if you had it manned, they wouldn't have to come from Kapole to Wainai. So the question is, I, I would like to see a date. When is that police station going to be function, working? Okay, because the thing is that I read this thing, and I, I, I don't believe what I'm reading, because the issue is not having more, the issue is having that police station, so-called, working. Anyway, um, and the, the one, you talked about the roundabout on, um, um, Kapalama and Hala? Because Sunday we had another accident, and that accident was boom, no brakes, no nothing, just boom. So the question is, is the city looking to resolve this problem on Kapalama and Hala? Because you told me that now our councilperson is going to talk to me about the roundabout.
She's going to provide an update of, uh, that the latest that DTS provided, uh, the council member. Um, like I said, I've seen it, uh, you know, we can sit late for, um, Lisa to provide that update.
Yeah, because.
But DTS, I, I am aware DTS is looking at it. And like I said, for my report, based on my report, it is that, hey, we need more time for our kind of response, um, not only to this neighborhood board, but also to, um, Representative Mizuno's office. Uh, but like I said, Lisa from Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office does have an update.
Because this roundabout came to this board. That's why I came to this board, and that was about twenty years. They proposed a roundabout, but after that, the roundabout died. And I've been pushing the four-way stop. Okay, and two administrations already gave me a letter saying that it's not feasible. I don't know why it's not feasible, because if you go down Bernice Street and you go up, um, on, on a level, here's four-way stop signs. Why can't I have a four-way stop sign, which is the most accident-prone intersection? As far as I'm concerned, in a residential area of the state of Honolulu? Because the question, uh, there is too many accidents on that intersection. And then the city has to do something, because the city has been dragging their feet, saying, well, I cannot do this, I cannot do that. I mean, hey, we pay taxes. I was about to get something done in that corner, because, hey, if there is a fatality, I'm going to be the first one to testify that the city has been neglecting our requests. Because I've been putting the request in so many years already, and all I get is, I'm sorry, we cannot do it. I'm sorry that, uh, a location order is not feasible for a four-way stop sign. But there's four-way stop signs on Bernice Street? Above mine? I mean, come on. I know it's inconvenient for four-way stop sign, but we got to stop speeding on Kapalama Avenue, because most of these accidents are speeding, either they're going up or coming down Kapalama. And the poor guy who's going, trying to cross from, uh, Hala Drive? Anyway, uh, I, I would like to know, and I'll talk to the council about this thing about the roundabout. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh. Anything else? Okay, any other questions from the board, from the audience? Webex? Hey, thank you very much. Moving right along. Uh, let's see, our council member, Councilmember Tam's office?
Hi, this is Lisa. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, aloha everyone. Um, just so we're, because we're already on the topic, if you don't mind, I'm going to start off with the Hala Kapalama, um, the information that I have. So Councilmember Dos Santos Tam was able to meet with DTS last week. So, um, they were talking about some of the, the speeding at Hala and Kapalama, and they're in the early stages of evaluating, um, what to do about the very wide leg of Hala Drive between Kapalama Avenue and Makuhine Street, uh, behind Kamehameha Shopping Center. Um, I will take to Councilmember, uh, the information about roundabout, about a four-way stop, just so to make sure if this is the type of things that you need to speak with, with DTS. Um, what is helpful to us is that the state passed SB three-two-four-two this year, which gives DTS the authority to decrease speed limits on any streets within one mile of a school. Um, Hala-Kapalama intersection is within one mile of Kapalama Elementary School. So that is something that, uh, we're going to be looking at. Right now, speed limits around schools are twenty-five. Um, Councilmember Dos Santos Tam and Kia Aina, um, have started a bill to reduce to twenty miles per hour. So that's very in its infant stage. So that's what I have, um, regarding Hala and Kapalama. Um, any questions on that? Maybe other notes that you want me to take on that?
Any questions? Donald?
Yes, yes. So you told me right now, Hala and Kapalama, uh, there's no resolution. I mean, what, what you just told me is that they're going back and they're going to do a study or whatever. My answer, or my question is, we need to get this thing done, okay? And the question is, hey, we don't need any, uh, so-called surveys, whatever you want to call it. I want, I want to know when are we going to have some action at that corner? That's all, uh, that's all I'm asking. If, if you can. What, shall I ask for a stoplight? I mean, you know, this thing has gone around and around many, many years already, and none of the city official has come out and self-tell us what they're going to do. Everything is, well, we're looking at it, or, well, no. I want to know when you folks are going to come out and tell us what is your guys' decision on that corner? It's very simple. I don't know why we got to keep on talking about it. I mean, come on. Thank you.
Thank you. I will, I will take notes back.
Okay, thank you. What else you have?
Sure. So I just wanted to bring up a couple of topics and some dates, um, that are in our, uh, newsletter, which should have been, um, put in your Google Drive. I'll start off with, um, Councilmember, uh, Dos Santos Tam's Bill Three was signed into law by Mayor Blangiardi to increase incentives for the construction of affordable housing. The bill boosts post-construction grant amounts for privately financed rental housing projects to encourage development under current market conditions. Um, as for all of these that I'll be bringing up, there's more information in the newsletter. On August twenty-ninth, Councilmember Dos Santos Tam introduced Bill Fifty-two related to e-bikes, along with Councilmember Toba, who represents, represents the Waipahu to Eba Beach areas. The absence of comprehensive e-bike legislation in Hawaii is a significant concern for road, driver, and pedestrian safety. And it works to provide a framework for classifying the varying miles per hour motorized vehicles that have increased popularity in recent years. So without these rules, there's risks of accidents increasing for both e-bike riders, pedestrians, and those on the road. Um, some couple of dates to, uh, keep in mind. September twenty-one, our office will be hosting an anniversary park cleanup at Eleven Park to celebrate its one-hundredth year. The park was originally established in September nineteen twenty-four. Uh, and due to diligence and hard work of the Department of Parks and Recreation, the park is well-maintained. We would only need a few volunteers for painting over graffiti and litter removal. And if you have any questions, feel free to call our office. Another date to keep in mind is September twenty-third. A special community meeting on the Primary Urban Center Development Plan will be held at Kuananakoa Middle School from six PM to seven-thirty. The purpose of the meeting is to review proposed changes to the plan with the public, gather input, and raise awareness. Uh, representatives from. Uh, representatives from DPP will be there to present and address any questions from the public. And this meeting is an extension of the City Committee on Planning and Economy. And committee members, along with Dos Santos Tam, will be present. The decision to hold this meeting in the committee was made to ensure that residents in districts facing significant changes have the opportunity to engage in, uh, directly. Um, I just wanna put out there that I've been sharing with all of my different neighborhood boards, um, to please come to these meetings and give feedback. Because whatever we can put into this development plan will directly affect you in your area. And then, uh, the last date that I want you to keep in mind is September 24th. At 6:00 PM Stevenson Middle, Middle School will be holding a community meeting with Senator Fupanaga, Representatives Pilati and Toktapano'uchi on the detrimental effects of the little fire ant on our environment. Um, and then last, I know that Judge Street is on the agenda for unfinished business. And I just want to let you know, I do not have an update on Judge Street, uh, as of today. Um, and, but that is all that I have.
So in regards to item number 10F, which is sidewalk on Judge Street, you don't have a report?
I do not, but I would say leave it, yeah, leave it on.
I'll, I'll leave it on the agenda. How about in regards to under new business, uh, under 11A, abatement of illegal gaming rooms? What's the status of bill, the bill that was introduced by, uh, Councilmember Tam?
I apologize, I do not have an update on that, but I can get it to you and send it by email.
Okay, I'll, I'll leave it on the agenda.
Thank you.
You can report back. As you know, you know, Laleha had its share of illegal gaming rooms. So we wanna make sure that this, this particular bill that was introduced by Councilmember Tam has some teeth to curtail the type of activities. So we like to know what the status is. Okay, any questions for Councilmember, uh, Dos Santos Tam? Yes, Carl?
Chairman Fong, um, I guess about, oh, maybe about a year ago, I, I brought up the, um, question about the basketball court at, uh, Park. And, um, this is also for the city. Um, and I think you reported that, um, plans are to, uh, fix the retaining wall. And is there any, um, update on when that might happen? So my, my neighbors' kids are playing in the street and they, they put up a crate. Pulled on the father did, straight, pulled on to the, the.
Where, where was this, where was this basketball court?
Eleven Park.
Eleven Park?
That, that's having a cleanup.
I, I can follow up on that.
Okay, thank you, cuz, yeah, a lot of the kids in the neighborhood, you know, um, could use a basketball court.
I'll put that on, I'll put that on, I'll put that on the agenda.
Instead of the street.
Anything else, any from the board members? Anything from the audience? How about Webex? Okay, if not, thank you very much. Appreciate that. I don't know if I should pose this question to Councilmember Tam or actually our city representative. Um, I'm, we're having a problem, at least, you know where Mamalo Street is, right? Mamalo Street, and if you go over the, the rise and you come down, I nearly, it was nearly an accident because somebody was parked on that, um, the dominant Mamalo Street. As you come over, you can't see it, anybody parked there, bang, and then they got whacked. One thing that was suggested, I don't know if we're bringing up to, to, uh, Councilmember Tam or, or the city. Uh, suggestion was put a no parking sign as you're coming over the rise, right next to the slow sign. You can take a look at it when you go up. Now, at least for one, which you cannot see the no parking sign from here to corner, till you get to that sign, it's way down there. I, I mean, I've seen some near accidents and I, I swear, that's, that's an accident to be happening. Okay, so I, I'm gonna put that on the agenda and I'll put it for both Councilmember Tam and also the city rep. Is that okay? Hello?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Ed, Ed is shaking his head, so you guys can get together. All right, any other questions, concerns? Thank you very much. Uh, let's see. Next, Carl Rhodes, Senator Rhodes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and members of the board. My name is Braden Chung and I intern for Senator Carl Rhodes and tonight I'll be representing, uh, him in his office. Uh, so Senator Carl Rhodes's office would like to submit the report for Laleha Neighborhood Board on the following matters. So last week, the Department of Health reported 480 new COVID cases, within a seven-day average of 72 cases and eight deaths for that weekly period. The state is still seeing the impact of the recent surge in COVID cases. I encourage you to stay up to date on your COVID shots as well as your flu shots. If you're over 60, there is now a vaccine for respiratory syncytial virus, or also known as RSV, which is also a good idea to get. A new update dated COVID, uh, 2024 to 2025 vaccine has been approved for use. COVID shots are now similar to flu shots in that they target the most, uh, prevalent strain of COVID. This vaccine is not meant to prevent the symptoms of every COVID variant, but rather the aim is to protect against severe illnesses, hospitalization, and death. And Chairman Fong, is it okay if I, uh, go over the helicopter issue or?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, definitely, yeah. We want you to explain what this, what the concern was about helicopters.
Excuse me, sorry. So this is some continuity from last board meeting. So Mr. Donald Nida, uh, Board Member Donald Nida, uh, had some concerns over the disruption of army helicopters flying over the neighborhoods, uh, within Laleha, Laleha. And our office has contacted, uh, Senator Ed Case and we're currently, uh, working with him and his office to, uh, kind of work these concerns out. And, uh, when we receive some, uh, information, we will be able to contact, uh, you guys a, as well as Mr. Nida. And hopefully we can resolve this issue.
Okay, that's fine, I'll leave it on the agenda, thank you.
Okay, and as well, uh, just so you know, uh, our office is preparing, uh, for bills for next session. And if you have any bill ideas, please let us know, know as soon as possible. Uh, I believe you guys have Senator Rhodes', uh, phone number as well as his email, correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay, uh, if you, but if you guys have any, uh, bill ideas, you can just let me know right now and I can write them down and I'll be able to relay it to Senator Rhodes.
Any questions from the board? Carl or Henry?
Yeah, hi. Um, I was listening to the Chinatown Neighborhood Board and they also are fed up listening about the COVID information. Okay, can you just drop it at this point in time? Because I mentioned this about three, four months ago and I held my tongue for a long time until I saw Chinatown's Neighborhood Board bring it up too. So if you don't have any information to provide to this neighborhood board, please don't come. Because it's like you're just wasting our time. Yeah, I do have a suggestion for Carl Rhodes, which is, please pass some bills that the Supreme Court would support. I hate to see our taxpayers' money spent in fighting in courts and then lose. Because when they lose, the other side's attorneys win and they, they get attorney fees paid off.
What, what kind of case you talking about here?
A lot of the 2A, Second Amendment type of laws that Carl Rhodes been trying. He's been an anti-gun individual and he's been passing laws.
Okay.
That aren't supported at Supreme Court level.
Anybody else from the board, any comments? Question? That's, how about from, uh, Webex? Okay, if not, please thank Senator Rhodes. And by the way, I, I am getting my flu shot and my COVID shot tomorrow, so I think it really helps. Yeah, yeah, I hear you. I'll take whatever for free. Anyway, I do encourage everybody, especially certain ages, to get that, get those vaccines. Uh, moving right along, let's see, who do we have? Oh, Senator Kim, is Representative from Senator Kim's office here?
Yes, good evening, my name's Kathy and I'm representing Senator Kim's office. Um, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So Senator Kim's September community report was sent electronically, um, I believe last week. There is two issues that we wanna highlight from the community report. Um, just before I start, none of these issues took place in your neighborhood, but Senator did feel that, um, it was important to highlight, just in case, um, concerned residents were facing, you know, had questions or issues. So one was about, um, complaints regarding clean and sober homes. So the Department of Health Drug and Alcohol Abuse, um, they monitor the homes, so people can send their complaints there. And then, number two was about open burning. So that is also handled by the Department of Health as well. Is there any question?
Oh, no. Any questions from the board?
We have more, um, information in the community report that people can reference.
Okay, thank you. How about from the audience? From Webex? If not, thank you very much. Thanks Senator Kim for us.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Uh, oh, Representative Akonochi, hi. Take the lead off at Lalea Kalani Gardens.
Everybody's favorite site. Yes, uh, okay. Lalea Kalani Botanical Garden, um, school street first encampment, sorry, no update. Um, I did have Kelton follow up, um, you know, we, I have a monthly check-in with both DOT and DFM. Um, DOT still maintains, you know, when they see stuff down there on their side, they send the crews down. But again, they can only do the part under the bridge and they don't do the other portion. Um, I was kicking around some ideas with Edward that I'm gonna try and escalate a little bit more, um, on the city side to see if we can get some movement. Um, I think there's just a lot of sites for the city crews to go, you know, they have the entire, um, island of Oahu and I think we're just trying to see how we can prioritize our, um, site a little bit, but.
Let me follow up, let me follow up with that, because I just went down there. There, there's a whole bunch of homeless guys under the bridge, setting up shop, taking in laundry, hanging it on the fences. And there's, there are no homeless in the park, I know that. So I don't know, that's probably good, but nobody else is in the park either, right? It's kind of dead, but it's a very nice park.
Yeah.
So it, it's really the question of getting those homeless off, out of that, uh, the bridge, below that bridge area.
Yes, that's what we've been trying to do.
You're trying, what's, what's the problem?
The problem is the city crews have been busy, I think, at other.
But this is, that's state jurisdiction.
And only under the bridge is state jurisdiction. But they wanna go down with the city because they all, the, the city has the portion of the stream that goes up into the park.
Uh-huh. So where they're hanging their, their laundry out on the fence, that's a city, city portion. Got that in?
And we kicked around some other ideas and.
Well, I think I'm, I'm like Don, I know he mentioned this, this has been on the agenda for two years now. And, yeah, I think it's, I think it's something like, uh, zero, zero facility and state and 100%.
Prioritize this site, I think that might be helpful.
I, I know, I know, I know, but we would like to get that, get, get that taken care of. Well, it looks like the homeless is winning.
Yeah, I mean, I, I try every month, Cher. I'm, any, any support the board would like to give officially would probably be welcome at this point.
Well, we go down, we can't touch them. But anyway, let us know.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, it's still on the agenda. I think, I looked back, I think it was on the agenda last year.
Uh, I think it's been on the agenda for at least five or six years, to be honest. I, I know I started reporting for Tekashi on this, um. And I mean, to be honest, the HPD and some of the city agents have really helped. I know at the beginning, you know, there was a lot more violent individuals that the neighbors were reporting. So you know, a lot of that has gone away. I know there's still drug activities, some, you know, theft, but you know, I, I think they have been able to make some headway. I know we kinda joke about it here, but, and, and we are trying to move them along, um, and the situation has gotten.
Well, keep us, keep us pointed up, posted, because when I was down there the other, well, a couple, a little, uh, last month, I was talking to some of the neighbors and they were, they were actually immune from, because the homeless don't go to the park. And there's, the park is very seldom used because it's, the parking, the parking is very terrible. You gotta park along that, that wall. But it's a very nice park, very nice, I, so, but anyway, uh, I'm sure the state and the city can get together and, uh, remedy this, hopefully with the next five years. I'm sorry, continue on. Oh, yes, Henry?
Maybe, I remember, what was it, Corporation Council, one of the attorneys anyway, was saying that they're gonna really pursue more repeat offenders, okay? So why don't we just go ruffle them up, give them citations, after they accumulate ten, then we can really go, put some jail time behind it, what I mean? Because they're, they're not getting the message. They're just playing the game with all of us. So that's one suggestion we need to try.
Go ahead, continue.
Okay, um, just two events that I thought might be of interest to the board that got, and I got sent to my office. Um, the first is that there's a Kupuna and Caregiver Resource Fair being hosted at the Hangonji, um, along Palihai Highway. Um, that's gonna be on Saturday, September 21st, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. They're gonna have representatives from over 20 local companies to kind of provide information and resources available to, um, people who are doing Kupuna and caregiver services. There's, uh, light breakfast and lunch are provided, so an RSVP is required. Um, if you want to RSVP or get more information, you can email this email address. It is K W Y A T T zero one, so K Y at zero one at dot com. Um, or there's a phone number available, that's gonna be 808-292-4665. And I guess on the flyer we got, you can also, if you search Kupuna and Caregiver Resource Fair on Facebook, um, I guess they have a Facebook, a couple Facebook posts up that you can kind of go their page and take a look at. Uh, the second thing is that there's a Hawaii Small Business Fair hosted by the Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism D-Bet. So this is gonna be a little later in the month, on Saturday, September 28th. It runs from 7:30 AM to 1:30 PM. This event's gonna have classes on growing your business, um, things like technical assistance, um, to help you network, meet other government or nonprofit and financial institutions that kind of to help, um, get started or strengthen your small business. Um, so it's a free event, but again, registration is required. Um, and you can go to, oh, sorry, and the location is at Leeward Community College, so a little far from here. But if you know somebody who's committed to kind of, um, gain these resources, um, should be a worthwhile, uh, trip. Um, and you can go to, to the State Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism's website to register. And there should be a little bit more details on there as well. So registration, uh, for both of those, if you're interested though. Um, that's all I have to report and I can take other questions back as well.
Questions from the board? Don?
Hey gentlemen, you know, a while back, I asked Senator Rhodes to help you with this, um, school street, bridge. Is the Senator helping? Do I need, do we need to put more pressure on him because, uh?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to take lead, um, I, I, I think the, the coordination part that we need help with is to make sure the city crew can be made available with the center and everything, but the state crew, um, seems to have a little bit more resources, you know, we, we are bigger, we have a bigger budget than the city guys, so we, we are trying to coordinate and get there though.
So he, so what you telling me, he is helping?
Yes, and I send him updates when I get updates.
Yeah, because the thing is that, you know, sometimes because of, of so-called his position, I think he might be a more so-called well than you, so that's why I asked him to assist you. Because the thing is that you're, you're here and you're. to assist you, because the thing is that you're, you're here and we're not moving. That's why I asked him on his side, if he can do a little bit more pushing to get the same so-called result.
Again, I think it's, it's on the city side that they're waiting for the coordination, so I think we're.
So, no, my, my question is, he's helping you, he's helping you, right?
We're, we're in contact.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, yes. No?
Yes, I don't have a question per se, but I would be in favor, I would be willing to put together a resolution and send over to the mayor's office um to push for the city to how would you word it?
Prioritize this thing. I can work with you on the language.
Correct, and then I'd be, um I'd ask for the board's help as well, since I'm not quite.
So what do you, so you want, what do you want the board to do? If anything?
Do I need to make a motion to?
Well, you can make a motion or you wanna make a resolution, or it's up to you. Yeah, okay, go ahead, you can make a motion.
I make a motion that this board formulates a resolution to send to the mayor to prioritize when you have Kalani Botanical Gardens.
To the mayor and the governor or just the mayor?
Just the mayor's office. I never mentioned the governor, sorry.
Ah, okay, you're gonna draft a resolution?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't you do this, why don't you, if you, it's okay, everybody, draft a resolution, bring it to the next um meeting and then let's take a look at it and then we can adopt a resolution, send it to the mayor's office.
Okay.
Okay, we don't need a motion, I think.
Okay, okay.
All right, I'll, 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 I'll put it on, I'll put it on.
Thank you.
What we call it, uh resolution? Resolution uh for uh Lillio Kalani Gardens?
Yeah.
Resolution to Mayor Lillio Gardens. And then I'll put your name.
I, I thought there was a decision on that and then it fell to the state, that's why we've been, we've got her
Well, he wants to direct this to the mayor, I don't, that's.
Because I thought the jurisdiction for that area belongs to the state.
It does.
The city.
It does, that's why I just asked them in regards, do you want also to have it to the mayor and the governor?
So this, the, so the jurisdiction is to both, but the issue that we've been having is that we can't do the coordinated sweep because the city resources have been kind of tied up for a while. And so we've only kind of gotten them out there maybe once.
Okay, if that be the case, direct it to the mayor, that's good, okay?
Yeah, that's why I directed it strictly to the city, because my, I was at the state that's been pulling their.
What you can do is drop, drop a resolution, email it to me, I'll review it, and then we can have the uh neighborhood assistant kind of review it to make sure we could dot our i's across the t's, okay?
Okay, that sounds good.
Any objections, board? Board, any objections? Okay. Anything else? Board? Audience? Webex? No, thank you, representatives? Okay, next, um Representative Mizuno. Anybody from her office? How about Representative Hall? Anybody from his office? Uh how about uh Governor's Representative? Darius? How about a representative from our congressional district, um Representative Ed Case's office? Okay, um I needed a motion to approve the minutes of um August twelfth. Let everybody speak. Thank you, Dale. Move by Dale, is there a second? Second by chance, so we approve the minutes of August twelfth? Uh any corrections first of all? No, if none, all in favor of approving the minutes, just say aye. Any opposed, motion's carried, thank you. I think we finished everything under unfinished business, I don't think I missed anything. Everything was done under the new business, I think, yeah. Yeah, okay. Malahia, anybody from Malahia? Nope. Anybody from St. Francis? Nope. Lana Kila.
So I passed out the Lana Kila newsletter and it's um, it's got lots of information in it, especially for those who are sixty and over. The classes, there are more and more classes being added all the time, so please take advantage of the availability to get involved. Um the fifty-fifth anniversary souvenir booklets are on sale now, they're ready to be picked up. It's, they're ten dollars and you can pick them up at Lana Kila Senior Center. Um Lana Kila was, uh did get their grant and aid from the state. Uh so for this year, so they're be going back to the legislature next year for next year's fiscal year budget. And then the one thing to highlight is the Thirty First Annual Children and Youth Day is coming up on October sixth. And that will be at the um Honolulu Halei grounds, the whole Frank Fosse area. It's from ten till three and Lana Kila Senior Center will have a booth there. But there will be many, many people there and please go and enjoy the Thirty First Annual Children and Youth Day. Any other questions?
No, you know that I, I, I got a copy of the fifty-fifth uh anniversary. Suzie brought one, a copy up to my house. That was very well done, and maybe if you don't mind bringing a copy, just so we can show everybody next time.
Okay. I'll, I'll see if I can get one. If you have yours, why don't you bring yours?
Oh, I can, I thought you, maybe you can, all right, I'll bring mine. Let's see, uh.
If people want to order them, I can, uh I can collect and go get them, get them.
Let them, let them take a look at it.
Okay, all right, oh, you just buy them because you're supporting the center.
Got it. I, I made a big contribution, that's why, on behalf of the, the board, so. Okay, any other questions for Lana Kila?
Yes. Hey Carol, you know this thing about um concerns and all that? Does Lana Kila seniors have any concerns about the community? Because the thing is that um I'm trying to get them involved in our board. I tried to do it the last time when they had that so-called um food um gathering.
Showing self.
Yep, because the thing is that um I would like to see some input from Lana Kila of any of their concerns to our neighborhood. And then we can bring it up and hopefully we can resolve those issues for them. Because um they have a big group, they have uh, so can you go and ask if um if there is any seniors' concerns about our neighborhood that they would like to see um brought up to the city or the state? Um on any problems they feel that they have?
So the Lana Kila Mo Purpose Senior Center serves uh seniors much further than just our board area. They come from Makiki to Moana Lua. So it's, there are many that are in our area, but know that they're the scope of the center is much larger than neighborhood fourteen, although they are in our district.
I, I realize that, and then the other concern is if they are outside our district. We always can have a conversation with our so-called neighbor neighborhood board and, and we can give them the so-called problems that they have. Because somehow we need to get more input from the community, because right now if you look around, we bringing up all the concerns. I would like to see the citizens or the neighbors bring up their concern. So we can go ahead and start resolving some of the problems, because you know, I feel there's a lot of people who wants no parking signs or parking not, not available, or you know, the same um I would like to see the board get more active in the community. Right now, we're just touching, our concerns are just a single sheet. I would like to see more input, because there's a lot of problems that we don't know about. And I would like to know about it, because hey, those people are the people who are in our community. And I would like to also say, serve them and, and, and try to correct any problems they have. So anyway, if you can talk to whoever and ask them, and then if you know, if you wanna call a meeting, I'm willing to go down again. And I'm, I'm willing to, you know, write it down, listen to them and have some kind of input from our senior, senior citizens of what is going on in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Don, good idea. I think the last time we had a show and tell, what it was called, we, we set up a booth.
Show and sell.
Yeah, we set up a booth, but I don't know that, you know, for information, good idea. Any, anybody else in regards to Lana Kila? You put the good word. Okay, last on the agenda is Friends of Leha Library. You know, um Representative Tapunuchi, are you, are you in touch with the library? Uh the Leha Library? Because you know, Brandon has, I don't, he's busy and he was our liaison, I haven't heard from him. Uh can you find out that, you know, is, are you gonna have an open house or how we can help them or?
Are you talking about the potential grand opening that they were gonna do because of COVID that they had to postpone? I think. I passed that at this point.
It's, it's, it's probably passed by that, I know that was.
I can confirm, I, 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 I know the librarian, I can ask her to.
Well, I guess maybe, since we have it on the agenda, Friends of Leha Library, we haven't heard anything from them.
I think that's more of an update, right, because Brandon's a member on the Friends of Leha Library.
Maybe can, you know, if somebody who wants, if someone wants to come, maybe that's a better word. And, and you know, tell us about the, the library or what, how we can help or et cetera.
Um I'll drop an email to the librarian this week and ask her if she, her name's Marissa.
Maybe she'll come to one of our meetings and say, hey, you know, what we have.
I'll just tell her now that's an option, an open invite from the board and if she wants to send any updates, she can also email you or me.
I, I used to go down there and get those uh, what do you call those? DVDs, the, you know, the Gunku DVDs, plus a dollar piece. But uh, stuff like that.
Yeah, no, because they're, they're doing stuff like all month long, they have like a lot of programming and
Yeah.
Yeah, their meeting rooms open to be rented out if you need meeting space and stuff, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, Brandon's very, very good.
Great. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, you know the way you, you talked about the great um library? I'm at uh Senator Kim's um memo. There's gonna be a bingo on September tenth from ten to eleven and the so-called community is invited to play bingo. I got that from Senator Kim's um so-called sheet, the one she sent out.
Are you going?
I might go.
Is, is that the Kaliki Palama? Is that the Kaliki Palama one, Brad?
Um it's called, it's called Lillio Public Library.
That's, that's, yeah, that's yeah. Okay, all you guys can go down and play bingo. All right, thank you, Don. Okay, anything else under?
Wes.
Yes, Henry.
We call, you're having a St. Francis Kapuna Village Dedication Day on September twentieth. That's a Friday at one PM in the St. Francis Kapuna Village courtyard. Uh after the dedication, it will have walk-through of the St. Francis operations and facilities.
Is that, is that by invitation or is it open?
It's open to anyone.
Okay, say it again, the date again.
September twentieth, Friday, one PM.
It's uh sort of like an open house?
If they're rebranding from.
Yeah, they're opening up, yeah.
Kapuna Village.
Assistant living over there. Yeah, good, we can go down, it's really nice. Thanks, uh Henry. Anything else from the board? Okay? If not, uh the announcements the next meeting, it'll be Monday, October the fourteenth, same times, same station. Uh if there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Move by Dale, is there a second? Second by chance? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, no opposition, motions carried, please help put back the tables. Thank you, everybody for coming.